Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our first community town hall meeting here in the beautiful Boulder Town Hall. My name's Glenn Wilson, I'm the Mayor for the City of Cowgully, Boulder, and it's a wonderful opportunity to have you all here today. Just before we start, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians in the land of which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. A little bit of a housekeeping just before we get into this afternoon. We are recording this particular session and there'll be some photos being taken today. If you do not wish to have your photo or your presence on a video, please make yourself known to our staff. We will be putting this onto our website and also our social media as well. So please, if you do not feel comfortable having your photo or having your image on our video, please let our staff know. First of all, obviously I've introduced myself, but we've also got several councillors who are down here and members of our senior leadership team, our executive leadership team for the City of Cowgully, Boulder. I'd like to pass the microphone over to them, they can stand up and give you a short little introduction about themselves and who they are and roll out. Noting that councillor Bodica here has just had knee surgery. Councillor Bodica, feel free to remain seated for that performance. I'll pass over to the Deputy Mayor, Kirsty Galloway.
Hi, I'm the Deputy Mayor and I've been on the council since my third year in my position. And I live in the city, I love this city and I have lots of fun with my family and friends in the community.
Thank you. If you'd like to refer to councillor Bodica on the screen, is he in here in person? No, no, no.
Hi, everybody, I'm councillor Bodica. I'm a local, I've been on council for many, many years now. And like I'm councillor Bella, I really love the city too and love everything about our community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, it's fantastic to see such a great turnout. I'm Terence Turner, this is year number five for me on council, so really exciting. I'm after getting through the first four years. I'm really excited that I'm here at the Boulder Town Board and get the opportunity to really get some questions from you guys and see what we can do to help answer any question you guys might have as well as I'm a big believer of the diversity of the communities, what makes us so strong, so very excited to see some of your faces here.
Greetings, my name's Kyron O'Donnell. I came here for two years, 1984, and didn't ever leave. And this is my second tour of duty, started this second time in October. Thank you very much for coming.
Hi, I'm councillor Nadia Turner, so similar to councillor O'Donnell, this is my second stint on council, having previously served four years and then came back last year in October. I'm really happy to be here in the Boulder Town Hall, having grown up in Boulder and I'm proud to have lived in Cowgully, Boulder all my life. And fantastic to see so many people here because we're representative of you and this is what we need. We need community engagement so that we can hear your questions and your concerns. So thank you all for coming out on a Friday afternoon.
Thank you councillor Turner. Also noting councillor Johnson is an apology this afternoon, unfortunately he's been held up with work. Councillor Brown is also unavailable to make it today. And councillor Viskovich, we have a delegation being over to Canberra as of the next few days. Councillor Viskovich is gone just a little bit ahead of time. We've got some big meetings with politicians in Canberra, which is always a lot of fun. To this side of the stage, we have the CEO, Miss Nedweth, his executive leadership team. We'll introduce our CEOs to Andrew Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Bryan, I'm the CEO here in the city. I've only been in Cowgully for about two and a half years now. However, I've been in local government for about 34 years across two states. Love being in the regions, there's so much opportunity out here and looking forward to working with the councillors elected in October last year to deliver on the community priorities and outcomes. So with that, I'll pass it across to Alex, who's the first of the directors.
Hi, everyone, my name's Alex, I'm the director at Twelvemore Growth at the city. I came to the city over 22 years ago. I've actually absolutely loved the place. I raise a young family here, so I have a five-year-old, a seven-year-old, a 12-year-old. And I've got a couple of siblings, just a lovely, wonderful families.
Hi, everyone, my name is Mia Hicks and I'm the Director for Community Development. Today is my three-year anniversary in the City of Cowgully, Boulder, so I thought I'd put that out there. And I came to Cowgully about 16 years ago. My family is, my husband's family is from Cowgully. And I love how welcoming everyone is. As you can tell, I'm not originally from Australia, I'm from Canada. But yeah, I just love the welcoming community and the community spirit we have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Glenda Abraham, I'm the Director for Corporate and Commercial. I've been in Cowgully for about nine months and also in local government for around nine months. The one thing I've noticed, it's been a great transition, Cowgully is a very welcoming town. And I've really reached out and met quite a few people and enjoyed all the activities that London's offered on.
Afternoon, I'm Louis Campbell, I've been, I'm Director of Engineering in the city. I've been in the city for 22 years. One of the things I do love about what we do, we get to make a difference in a place where we meet, where our kids live and our friends live, and every day enjoy coming to work for that reason. Enjoy the people while working around us while making that difference.
My name's Frances, I've been here for two years next week in the city, but I've been in town for about 15 years. So like these others in my team, I raise a small family here and love the community and I've been part of it. So being able to work at the city and being able to contribute to that has been an absolute joy for the past few years.
Frances, and obviously why we've introduced our seniors, later on we'll have a question and answer, which I'm sure you've already got a few questions ready to go from the city, but our folks, our executive leadership team will be probably answering most of those particular questions tonight. That'll be facilitated by our CEO, Andrew Bryan. So why have we got you all here today? Obviously, we've got a lot to let you know about. My first meeting with the CEO after being elected. At the end of that particular meeting, the CEO asked, "What would you like of staff?" And I said, "I'd like a town hall meeting." It's something that I've felt we're lacking as a city in the last eight to 10 years. And it's something that gives us a lot of ability to hear exactly what's going on with boots on the ground from you. We can hear your passion, we can hear your excitement, we can hear what you're for, what you're against, and it gives us a much better indication for our seniors leaders to be able to understand the community. There are times that we haven't got that right in the past and I'd like to change that moving forward for our local government. And since obviously the election, we've got councillor Winnie here, who looks like he's going to a lolly factory. That's not Father Christmas in the middle, that's actually councillor Wayne Johnson, our Deputy Mayor, and councillor Nadia Turner, the seniors' Christmas lunch just last year, towards the end of last year. The opening of our Cow City Centre project, which was a contribution between the state and also throughout our local government as well. And that's obviously in the space that we're going to start working with in terms of activation. As you've seen, the sign has gone up that back wall, we're doing collaboration with the Cowgully, Boulder Chamber of Commerce and Industry to bring more events and more opportunity for our local businesses in our main CBD, in Cowgully CBD and also the Boulder CBD. Further events that we've been involved in, well, we all noted the power now earlier this year. This is an internal look, you know, this is pretty rare to get this sort of stuff, but I love showing it because it gives you the idea of what goes on at these particular meetings. We've had, just working away quickly around the table, Department of Communities, Department of Health, Western Power, a CEO, member for Cowgully myself, Deputy Mayor, our Superintendent of Police, Shire Kilgardia involved, other providers within the city as well, and the Energy Minister. He was quite nice to come out here on his annual leave, he was due to go on holidays that day. But as we know, we still have to solve that power issue and as recent as today, we're having those conversations with Western Power still as well. We're continuing to work on our advocacy for the city to get a much better service. The Premier obviously was quick to come out here as well. The Premier sat in the main chair, he listened to all of the concerns of the city, antisocial behaviour and our rest of the summer, where people didn't feel safer in our community, were the top priorities that we gave to the Premier. But we're not just having them here and them listen to us, we're actually providing solutions. One of those solutions that was provided to the Police Minister, we were very quick to get along with him because he was out here very quickly at the start of the year, by the way, was to work collaboratively, work on solutions. One of those was just announced last weekend, $150,000, which will go into three cars for our security team and our safety streets patrol, and that will get advanced a little bit later on when our budget is adopted, should be adopted in that format, where we're going to start residential patrols. So that is part of our bigger plan on that, we'll have you more from that shortly. Other events and other items that we've been involved in since October as well include our anniversary of In-Center Meals at the Eastern Goldfields Community Centre. We've continued on our approach there to engage with our seniors and do that better. Further to that, we've had the Oasis Turn 25 this year as well, and it's a great chance for our councillors to be alongside our staff as well. This was particularly special, the lifeguards are the most important people at the Oasis. They're the ones who can save you when you're drowning, they always get left out of the events and the things that matter, I guess, around the Oasis. We closed the pool head so they could be part of our celebration there, we had a big cake and cut the cake. Further to that, our youth man, Emily Stewart, now Emily's not here tonight because it's very rare we've got an event at the Cowgully Town Hall and at the Boulder Town Hall on the same day. Our youth man Emily's doing a wonderful job and he's emceeing tonight's event at the Cowgully Town Hall, so that gets underway shortly. Councillor Winner jumps from here to there at five o'clock to go and represent as well. And then the rest of the council have got a citizenship ceremony here tonight, but we're very proud of our work there. And recently, our seniors expo, again, our councillors liaising with staff and members of the public as well. Further to that, we've reinvested with our Rubitran, which is a tourism asset for our city. We continue to look at various different ways that we can engage with business within the city. Roadworks, youth precinct at Kingsbury Park and of course, local business in our Dharma. They're all key parts that the city works on and is continuing to work on as well. Our Mother's Day market was very popular again at our Oasis to see the lifeguards and our senior staff and the behind-the-scenes staff there at the Oasis participate together. Our golf course continues, sorry, our golf course continues to hold events at all different ways, shapes and sizes. We've moved our skate park to accommodate our youth precinct, Kids Fest again was very popular and our sunsets at the Sound Shell continues to be extremely popular for families to make the most of our beautiful summer evenings here in Cowgully, Boulder. The main reason for getting together today is about my last year, we got together with around 1,300 responses for our community perception survey. Just having a look at this, this is the staff over here that we are working very heavily involved in. And that includes this particular one here, which is community safety and crime prevention. It's a priority for the city, but at the same time, it's something that we are very, very keen to work on. So we're working on our highest priority, but also at the same time, our lowest amount of review. This is terrible, this is good, this is where we sit with community safety and crime prevention. Our local roads also feature as part of this, so from community safety event to our local roads, and we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time on our roads in recent times. Then housing, and housing becomes a bit of an issue for us within the city, obviously for, not only for those that are displaced, but also for our employees and employers to get somewhere that they feel comfortable living. Services for families and children, i.e. childcare services, we continue to advocate for. Health and community services, lighting of streets and public spaces, services for seniors, footpaths and cycleways and services for you. Really wanted to bring this back to you today, of the 1,300 responses, this is how they look on a screen. And next slide shows our people, what we're up to within our particular areas of our community. Family and good services continue to be a focus for us alongside our seniors. And we look towards our people in our community, who are our opportunity here to find out more detail within our city and also obviously give us the feedback we desire, including attending meetings like today. This particular focus continues for us within the City of Cowgully, Boulder with a series of actions that have taken place with that key focus taking into consideration our city's strategic community plan, corporate business plan, and that strategic alignment as well with our efforts that are targeted in that area. So that continues on with our people and our focus on where we sit at the moment. And our places, improved lighting, housing and land, improved footpaths and cycleways and our local roads. Alongside that, we also have some tics, some works in progress and where we're moving in these particular spaces as well. Our advocacy for access to increased housing and to attract health practitioners and services in health within our city, we're continuing to do that. Our $6 million youth precinct at the moment, which is funded between the city and also through the state program, is a work in progress. Our youth strategic action plan is a work in progress and sponsorships to youth organisations to encourage the delivery of increased youth programmes is in place at the moment. Alongside our senior services, we're delivering quarterly pulse surveys for seniors to ensure activities and services continue to be met. Now, seniors week expose, you saw a photo previously, that's continuing on and so too are the activities with providers. We're delivering senior services providers roundtable events to assess the gaps in services for our seniors. And we also continue the age-friendly strategy and the action plan with the support of our seniors focus group. And I do note that there may be a couple of members who are here today, please get RSVP. Our health and community services, we continue with our inaugural Cowgully, Boulder Health Plan, which is now part of our corporate business plan. Our advocacy for the increased rate of delivery of health services, including mental health services, is very pivotal for the City of Cowgully, Boulder. Alongside our continued development with the age-friendly strategy, our club development plan and our access and inclusion plan. Many people have mobility issues within the city and we understand that not all areas of our city are most accessible that they could be. We continue our focus on mental health and wellbeing initiatives, both internally within our organisation and externally as well. And that includes collaboration with local support agencies. In our community safety and crime prevention, we've developed the plan and we've also continued to develop a strong relationship between ourselves, our partners in safety streets and also WA Police, noting that they're in the room tonight as well. Deliver a community safety prevention plan that went to council back in November. We continue our CCTV partnership programme as well, we've got 100,000, which was just recently earmarked for CCTV into our city. And we are a work in progress developing, implementing guidelines for our city infrastructure that includes crime prevention and identifying criteria. That will probably always be a work in progress. We'll look at how we design our features moving forward within the city and how they can be better suited to help prevent crime and also antisocial behaviour. Improved lighting, while lighting is not a direct city responsibility, we do work with our providers in locations with infrastructure and the improvements in the city and public spaces. We're developing plans to deliver improved lighting and infrastructure according to prioritisation. Our smart LED streetlight programme continues and we're in collaborations with many other shires on that. Again, a hindrance there from the utility providers and commencing LED lighting replacement programme for the Oasis main fields. We've got funding in at the moment for the Oasis, sorry, for that musher park to be upgraded. The Oasis is also next on that list and it's not too far away there as well. In our housing and land space, we're removing the constraints to the subdivision and also development through the city and its government. And also, we are looking at active spaces that we can bring back to the council and back to our elected members to dispose of land to those who are keen to buy. The support of the release of additional title freehold lots available for residential housing. At the moment, we're working on a city land optimisation study and report. We hear a lot about lazy land, that's land that hasn't been used for a long time or it's not been used for anything. You know, you look at parcels of land such as the top end of Piccadilly Street, that's been identified with the minister as a parcel that could be developed. And we participate and advocate for land release through the Cowgully, Boulder Land Group. And we've seen the results of that recently with some lots, 32 up in Cowgully and also some industrial land as well. Our improved footpaths and cycleways, you've obviously noted there's an improvement in footpaths, Boulder will start it very soon. There's a lot that's happened throughout the Cowgully CBD. The continued implementation also of our cycling strategy plan, improving footpaths, as I mentioned, through the mobility mapping to make that a lot better for wheelchair pilots. And there's the install and renewed shared use of footpaths across the city to ensure accessibility. This is starting to take place alongside the Cowgully Cemetery and around Hammond Park at the moment, and that'll continue throughout the city. You drive around the Johnson's front roundabout, you'll see some of that work in progress, the one that has started there. And we're completing the design works for the renewal of existing footpath on Hammond and Burt Street. We know that the pavers are no longer fit for purpose. When we look at our roads, we've recently awarded a $22 million resurfacing and drainage work for our local roads, that continues. The way in which our roads are put together, I'm sure there's a question today which our director will be able to support, but we're focusing on resurfacing our Cowgully, Boulder CBD roads to support traffic flow and improvements. We're continuing the upgrade of essential connecting routes throughout the city to support better local distribution. And we've completed the essential upgrades at the corner of Johnson, Maxwell and Kingsmill to make it a much safer area for pedestrians and for vehicles as well. Right, a city update for 2024, and we'll continue on with that. And a big point that's been here, who here believes that they're getting an 11% increase on their rates? Okay, so there was some misconceptions about that from the media when they first published their story. I'm here to explain a little bit more to you. How we understand your rates at the moment, the rate in the dollar figure is provided through the multiplication of your property's gross rental value, which is set by the Valuer General. That Valuer General process has taken place this year. We cannot give you at this point in time the exact figure of a rate rise for the city. However, the way we have put it out so far is what we have raised by our rates will be increased. How we get there, I'll explain in a moment. But this is how the formula works to equal your rate portion to help keep our city running. The rate of the dollar, which is then multiplied by your property's gross rental value, which is set by the Valuer General, which is a state government department, then equals the rates that you get. It is a complicated process, I understand. And as soon as you do get your rates, if you've got any questions, please contact our staff, they're only willing to assist. From there, a little bit more on your rates. Our gross rental valuations, as I mentioned, are every three years. A summary of the changes that we've made in this particular segment to give you a bit more of a better understanding is we've got a residential category, which has 11,760 properties. There is a median change from the Valuer General, not from your rates, it's from the Valuer General of 54.18%. So that is set by the state government. From there, there are 487 properties with a median change of 11.8%. There are 768 properties with a median change in the industrial sector of 13.73%. There's vacant land, which there's 520 properties with a median change of 24.21% and miscellaneous properties, 22 with a median change of 2.49%. The overall challenge in the gross rental valuations, the GRV in role, was 39.91%. So we have to balance as a city to make sure that that's not being passed on to you in its entirety. Because guess what, if you heard 11% first of all, I'm hoping to hear what you think about 39.91%. That's based on 13,557 properties. As you can see, an article that was printed on the 1st of June shows that we hold the mantle as the most lucrative centre for landlords for more than eight years. This next slide, it's been provided to us previously to feedback, we should be looking to target where we put our rates. This is your rate pie from last year. This section here is the residential properties alongside the central business, general industry and other properties. Our mining potential piece here, which is the GRV of 0.89%, the exploration prospect, which is 4.92%, pastoral UV 0.87. So this, if you're a resident, this is what you want to be focusing on here, right? This is our mining piece here of unimproved value and this is the GRV here of those who have improved value, which is around a handful. Let's look at this one over here and some of the little changes that we have made. Under our 24/25 system, our residential properties are making up less of our rates model. So we've gone from having 51.76% of our residential rate payers contributing to our rates revenue to now less than, which is 50.27. From there, you've seen here also the other changes that have taken place. Now, GRV, we've put all of these categories here into one, which is commercial industrial properties and the GRV is 25.13. On this side also, you see that other properties as well are included in that. We've also split out accommodation, so temporary workforce accommodation is now part of our rating category and tourism, which is now 1.51% of our total rates pie. And we've increased the mining GRV from what was 0.89% to now 1.83%. So what that means is what we've taken off of your residential, we've talked up with the mining properties that are included under that category for the city. And then we've got the pastoral land as well, which is 0.89%. So that just shows you, it doesn't mean a big shift there and it probably doesn't, you know, it takes a little bit to take in there. But we are rating and bringing less income through the city by our residential, while we're putting more into mining unimproved and also mining GRV, which is the GRV figures that are now paying their role and making it a lot fairer for our residents. We'll take some questions on the rates a little later on. Now, proposed operating income, so from what you're putting for your fees and charges comes to about 36%. So this is the whole pie of what we bring in to the city, 36% comes from fees and charges. We get a small amount from interest, there's capital grants and subsidies and contributions which make up a small part, operating grants here, other income here, profits on the sale of assets, but your rates only contribute. This is the whole rating model, only 26% of our total budget. All of the income that comes from rates doesn't contribute to running the city. We get a lot from fees and charges and from other particular areas, so I just wanted to share that with you today so you get a little bit more of an understanding of that. Our budget highlights for 24/25, and this is where we'll bring the directors along. Our first director is Glenda Abraham to tell you more about what is covered in our next budget for corporate and commercial assets, which include the Oasis, our airport, golf course and CCTV.
Thank you. So first of all, I'll be talking about the airport master plan. Opened over 30 years ago, it was originally designed to only bring through 200,000 passengers, but today we're exceeding 420,000. A master plan that was constructed in 2018 also had a target of about 350,000 passengers and as you can imagine, we've well exceeded that. So the first thing that we're doing from a councillor's perspective is reviewing our master plan. And we're not only just looking at the terminal functions, which I know many of you might think is a little tight, but we're extending that to consider all the land use and considering the entire space as a concept that we can start looking for commercialising. So we've recently been out to market for any OI for a sole apartment. The Oasis master plan, 450,000 visitors on average per year, one of our most highly used recreational centres. We've also gone out with a community consultation in January this year and received positive feedback around an outdoor lagoon pool, of which we need about $25 million to fund. Portions of that is coming from a consortium of mining companies in conjunction with federal and state funding. So obviously something that we're going to be investing in as part of our long-term financial plan. The golf course precinct, one of the key areas for many of us and we've seen through media of late, but the city is committed to building a resort out there and we're continuing our forward works. Significant amount of work has to be completed at the site to ensure that we manage the infrastructure to set up for a build to take place. In addition to that, previously alluded to by the mayor, we are increasing our functions and beverage options out there, including events. And we're changing up some of our memberships, so we hope to encourage the public to be out there more often. The CCTV network has currently about 270,000 cameras, sorry, 270 cameras across the city. We're in a major investment phase. But in addition to that, we've done some significant work and if you've been around Burt Street recently, you would have seen that we've had to close it down just so we can set up some direct wifi to the Wake Hall Police. And we're also doing the same in Hammond Street. So we'll actually have direct feeds for our CCTV into our WA Police as part of the safer streets. In addition to that, we've got a further 50 identified security cameras and additional innovation spend by the city coming up to enable us to be more innovative around our security systems for CCTV. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenda. Onto our next division, which is development and growth. Alex, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What we need to do first there is the community safety and crime prevention space. So as the mayor's mentioned, we've adopted a community safety and crime prevention plan and that has an action plan in place and we've established a committee. Close the mic, is that better? Yeah, beautiful. And we've established a committee to kind of make them review the actions on that to make sure they're obvious contemporary and meet community needs and are flexible to respond to issues. Also in terms of certain spending that is needed and working with partners like the WA Police and the State Government, we're looking at significant expansion of the safety streets programme. And currently patrols are predominantly of a CBA day in Cowgully, Boulder, sorry, Cowgully CBA day. Talk at a seven-day programme that will include extended hours, so likely 7.30 through to 10pm and will include solaris into residential areas. And we're also looking at the other value add initiatives as we see the field of positions and the budgets adopted on that programme. And so we're hoping that will really deliver, I guess, collaborative outcomes for the community. We've also continued collaborating in that space and the summer response strategy, so that's partnering with a number of different kind of indigenous communities and organisations about how we actually help to turn people a country that might be in Cowgully, Boulder. Then moving on to our local planning scheme too, so this is the first new scheme in over 30 years at the city. It has significantly increased residential densities in a lot of areas to kind of support development, renewal and refreshment of our residential housing stock and provide a better range of, I guess, residential accommodation components. It's increased land for commercial and industrial uses and also added some additional uses into the industrial and commercial space, which we think will position the city to grow into the future and is a key part of making sure we've got jobs and industries to support our win in the future. Then looking at common house and land initiatives, so we've done an asset land strategy and study. We're working on, I guess, an optimisation piece of the city. And we've also released several blocks to market through open expressions of interest processes. So that includes areas one and two, which is on the corner of Rose and Highway and Bookman, sorry, Cadillac Street. Area three is going to be developed for a 400-home lifestyle village. And more recently, just considered by council, we're expressing interest for land on Johnson Street. So we're very focused in playing our part and we're strongly advocating too for the state to release more land. And I made several announcements and additional funding to the land up in. And I made several announcements and additional funding to deliver land up in Bury. Then turning to the Brooklyn Street, so the city has purchased 101 Brooklyn Street. And it's entirely, we've run an open OI process on that, on that side to attract investor interest in the council's part. And considering that as the investor. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Under community development, please.
Hello, thank you. So, so this year, community development is going to be working with our youth councils. So we have a really active youth council, which the mayor reflected on with a youth mayor, deputy youth mayor and the councillors as well. So they're really keen to get out and find out what the other youth in the community want delivered in the city and what we can do to, once we complete the youth precinct, what we can do to deliver events and activities for them there. In relation to the event strategy, we completed consultation last year. So thank you for everyone who contributed to that. That was very helpful because it helped us look at the annual events, what, what the community thought of them and also what you would like to see in the future. And a lot of that will be working on next years, working with community groups to help build their capacity to deliver their own events. The reconciliation action plan, it needs a refresh and we have a really dedicated group of reconciliation action plan members. And they, and we also have an internal champions group at the city. So we're working really hard to deliver outcomes for First Nations people in our community. And finally, this is the best one, the strategic community plan. We're doing a major review. Under the Local Government Act, we need to do a major review every four years and a minor review every two years. It's exciting because we have a new council, sorry, I was going to say great council, we have a great council and a new council. And they really want to hear from you on what you would like to see. What is your vision of Calguri Boulder in the next 10 years? So this is a great opportunity for you to feed into that and provide your feedback.
Thanks, ma'am. And last but not least, our engineering side of our budget for next year is always our exciting one. Because the majority of this stuff you can see very instantly. Louis Kemp, really.
Thanks very much. So next year, P2 part of the youth precinct. Currently probably about halfway through that. We expect to finish that in December this year. The cost of that is close to $6 million when we complete the project. That'll be fantastic for our youth, both in Boulder and Calguri. And we appreciate the patience, our kids are showing, waiting for that part to item. Road renewal programme, always one that everyone wants to know about. $22 million has been spent on that this year. And $22 million if approved in budget in July will be spent on that next year. Road renewal is one that people look at and goes like, you're doing it and it just leaves rock behind. And I'll probably explain a little bit about that and what that is. So our road renewal programme, we consist of a PMB seal or a polymer binding seal, followed by rock or asphalt. Now we could do it one of two ways. We could go all asphalt, all out of the city. And we'd do 20% of the roads we're currently doing. Or we can do the PMB seal that we're currently doing, which is basically the polymer seal with the rock pushes into the surface, gives us another five to seven years of life on our, on our roads. And of our roads, so it gives us a chance to, to basically get to that asphalt. And you'll see, so some roads get asphalt, some, most roads get PMB, but it buys us some time. Like three years ago, the roads in Calguri were in a state. I personally think the improvement in the last three years has been significant and will continue to improve in the next three to four years. Upgrades at South Pole and Westford Frequent Park. If you've been here the last three years without no water, our kids have had no water in our roads, schools have had no water. And so massive upgrades at South Pole and Westford Frequent Park, which will make sure that we've got water for our roads, for our parks, for our schools, for our racecourse, for our AC golf course, hockey stadium, for our golf course going forward. And so significant investment in that. Hopefully in the next four to five years, we're talking circa $100 million in water, but that gives us water security for our future. And last but not least, our footpath. If you haven't, if you've been up and down Bird Street or Hannon Street over the past 18 months, it is a break. The new bits in Hannon Street are fantastic, but paving starts time. And so in the next 12 months, we'll see significant improvements in both those areas, Bird Street and Hannon Street. If you want to go and have a look at the top end of Porter Street, it's a little bit like that. That'll be exactly what we're doing in Bird and Hannon Street. So exciting times, significant investment, looking forward to the next 12 months.
Thanks, Louis. Moving on to our next slide, just a, just a little bit to stay informed with, with how we get our information out there. Obviously at the City of Calguri Boulder website, YourSaCKB, which is a great opportunity to provide us with feedback on various different submissions and community consultation. Our art centre, airport, golf course and Oasis all have their own separate website. And of course, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn and YouTube, we have all of our social media channels. And further to that as well, obviously, is we stream our council meetings live. So if you don't want to come to a council meeting at the Calguri Town Hall, or we're hoping to get one in Boulder next year potentially, if council agree to that. I'd love to get one back here in Boulder. Then, yeah, you're able to view those as they happen online. Not just our council meetings, but also our council agenda briefings, which happen the week before our meetings. And for us, as elected members, provides some opportunity for us to understand the issues in the city a lot earlier than just getting to the council meeting. And then there's also obviously our updates, which I believe one, as the judge there is the 29th of June, will be going out on the 29th of June. And then our final slide, I think it might be time for question and answer. So this is the fun part of the afternoon, right? We've yanked up here on about what's going on with the city and where we're sitting is very high level, right? But we really need to hear from, from the people who are on the ground. This is the main part of this afternoon. Now CEO Andrew Bryan will lead our question and answer. And we've got a couple of microphones that'll make their way around the room. The CEO generally will tackle the question. He'll direct it to who he feels is probably best to answer that particular question, unless there's something that you have specifically. And we're only too happy to do that. If you don't feel comfortable asking your question in front of the group, we've got our elected members who are here as well. If you'd like to ask them any questions today, for them, it's a listening exercise. They've said their prayers today, they might be back up on the microphone at all. It's a chance for them to hear just exactly what's going on in the community. Mr. CEO, do you?
All right. Look, just so that everyone gets an opportunity, I will highlight that we do have a citizenship to a run in on as well this afternoon. So we are a little bit restricted on time. But so everyone can hear, anyone who has got questions, I'll bring the microphone up or the mayor will run the microphone up so that everyone can hear the question. Then I'll pass it to the wrong director if I can't answer it. So we're happy to take questions from anyone on anything we may have heard on this afternoon or other issues. So remember that.
He's going to make me run out, Mr. CEO.
Right, thanks everybody. Thanks, ma'am. My name's Amesley, I grew up in Calguri, but went away for a long time. Come back recently with my wife and kids and liking the town. But the biggest thing I've noticed is the increase in sort of the antisocial element of town. But the biggest challenge I think we've got as a town is the impact of FIFO on our town. We've got more gold coming out, more people than ever before living here. But how many families are living here? How many people are attracted to town? So what are we as a city doing to attract families to live in the town in the long term? What are we doing with mining companies to ensure that locally people, the local people are employed first? To guarantee the long-term future of our city? And just one quick question on the, the rates. When we determine the rate in gross rental value, most of the people that are living here obviously aren't renting out their place. So is there a variation possible on your, your value of your landed house as opposed to your rental value in rates for the residents?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll, I'll start with the, the rate component first, because that's the easy one. The methodology for rating in Western Australia is set by the state government. Local governments have been lobbying for a long time to look at alternatives to that rather than just GRV, whether that be unimproved capital value or any other methodology. There's been no appetite from state government to look at changing that. Even with the local government reforms, we've been going for a couple of years, we've pushed that to nowhere. So at this stage, that's the only methodology we've got, we have to use that. In relation to FIFO, it was touched on, additional land releasing, additional land releases is probably the biggest issue. And bringing on additional infrastructure to actually facilitate that. So one project we've got is the M Group development, which we do the airport, another 400 houses going into that area. And that is about bringing people in. It's not about FIFO, that's about accommodating both new families, but also government, government staff who bring families and actually reside in town. So that's, that's the focus of that development. Breview, new lots coming on there, which has been developed by Development WA. In terms of how we can combat FIFO a little bit further, one of the biggest challenges we have in that space and the only lever we've really got is how we actually rate those areas. So if they set up a workforce camp, how do we actually rate them to ensure that they actually invest money back into the community, which council can then reinvest in the community infrastructure and so forth. So we're never going to stop it. We'd rather people come to town. Certainly some of the mining companies are looking at workforce camps for projects. So people who are here for a year and then disappear once the project's finished. That's always going to happen, but we're certainly got a big focus on trying to get the residential workforce here. The major companies don't start, I think they've got about 95% or maybe a bit higher, is permanent residential. So we are working continuously in that space to try and bring that to fruition. The new planning scheme helps us facilitate that as well, that Alex talked about. So it is high on the council radar and it's something that we're continuing to work for.
So this is my question. Is there plans to fix the FIFO, waiting license on complex in relation to removing and replacing the raw soil that was used? That makes the grass hard.
So, so waiting, um, director of engineering can probably answer this one better than I can, so I'm starting across terms, Louis. Yes, there is. So the city's invested recently in a new machine that'll, as we say, removes the, the soil that, say, wrongly brought in. It was a lot harder than we thought it would be. So the new machine basically is a sandstorm, removes the current soil, brings in a, a larger sand particle, improves drainage. And I expect to see in the next 12 months a massive improvement in waiting, where both soccer and cricket and whoever else wants to use those bits has that going forward.
Yeah, I think you answered my question. In 20 years, the population of Calguri was 38,500 people. At the current standards now, it's 29. Flying, fly out, doesn't help any town. Building more single people accommodation isn't going to help us. But, you know, apart from land release, we need houses.
Yeah, so certainly it is always going to be an issue. Council is starting to develop housing. We're trying to free up land that we have. State government has actually invested $4 million in headwork infrastructure. So to upgrade the series works and things like that to enable further development to occur. So we are continuing to work with other levels of government to try and bring more land to market. Then you've got to get builders, which is the next challenge, but we are continuing to work down that path. So I understand that where you're coming from with that, it is going to be a supply and demand as we move through on that one.
And my other question would be the antisocial behaviour mainly at night time, not so much during the day. And the police are overworked and I believe underpaid for what they do up here. And where I live, I can tell you it's pretty bad.
And certainly, as was touched on by the, by the mayor when he was talking through some of the issues, there's additional 150,000 which has been allocated by the state government for additional couple of vehicles. In the proposed budget, we're looking at nearly doubling the size of our safer streets patrol in terms of staffing, which will allow us to run rather than just normal five day a week during business hours. We're actually pushing that from earlier in the morning to later at night and going to a seven day service. So we are focused on that. We have to get through budget first, then we have to recruit people into that spot. Working very closely with the, the police on that one as well. And certainly that will remain a big focus for council. It was the number one priority that came out of the community exception survey last year. So very high on council's agenda and I'll keep pursuing that one.
Sorry, sorry for the late, old nature takes its toll. Look, we're not going to really do make an inroads into reducing Florence layout until we get cheaper houses, cheaper land. Now, what I'd like to know is who actually owns the land at the end of Picadilly Street, the case into the council yard there? That's the first part of it, which, who actually owns that land?
So, director of engineering? So the lady talking about, the state government land, but because of the explosive reserve next storm, it's unavailable for use.
If, if the land's unavailable for use?
The land they're talking about, at the end of Picadilly Street, closest to explosive reserve.
Why is that?
Because of the explosive reserve. So there's a, there's a certain buffer zone around the reserve that is unavailable.
So the whole area there is not available?
That's correct.
Why then does the council waste our taxpayers' money, our road payers' money for ever putting buns on the tracks to stop people accessing that area from Picadilly Street?
So the area you're talking about is, is notorious for off-road vehicles. And to stop the vehicles, so you only access through the areas actually through railway line. So the intention is to stop the vehicles and the off-road vehicles going and unsafe. There's a number of horse stoppings nearby and that does exist in that area as well. So that's why they try and stop all those vehicles and the buffers go through.
Well, I can't, I can't get to come to grips with how dangerous off-road vehicles are in that area and that precinct. They can get into it anyway from the side street and also from the railway line. So seems to me a bit foolhardy and just inconvenient. Now, in terms of cheaper housing, why doesn't the council look at not getting access to heaps of land that is around Calguri and making that land available for, with a discount price for housing? People get a discount if they put a house on it quickly.
So in, in relation to vacant land around the city, the city has completed a, an initial audit of all vacant land. We've been working closely with the state government to try and get that land transferred across to it because the state government owns it, the city doesn't own it. If we can get it transferred across at minimal cost, that means that the land's available a lot cheaper. But you've still got to go through a subdivision process. But if we can actually bring it to market, which is what state wants us to do as well, then we can actually start to address that, that affordability issue around building. There's a lot of land which you assume is available, some in strange reserves, some diseased for other purposes. So we've looked at every parcel around the city and tried to work out what can be done easily. Because that's the first thing, we've got to be able to bring it on, it's got to be serviced land. So we are working very closely with state government to bring that land on.
Well, there are lots of parcel properties that surround Calguri. And it is possible to get the annex areas of that parcel land. And that would free up an awful lot of land. Now, 25 acres isn't going to make any difference to the parcels, but 25 acres here and there make a big difference to available land.
Yes, certainly, certainly land is a, is a major issue for us. A lot of the land outside of the urban footprint is constrained through mining towns and everything else. So we look, we look everywhere we possibly can, but we're restricted for that. So we are bringing something to market as quick as we can, but we are constrained in that. But in, in, I know there's other people here who've got some questions, so if we can share, we'll come back to you once we've had a few other questions.
I doubt you will, but thank you.
Hi, how are you? Listen, we're just average people in town and it's the basic things that annoy us. Like when we have water constraints and usher parks giving water to 2 o'clock in the afternoon on a 40 degree day. Things like that. When you've spent X amount of dollars on St. Barbara's Square that none of us can enjoy because we get mobbed to buy paintings or whatever. These things annoy us as town folk. We're upset. A rate increase will annoy everyone guaranteed. These are little simple things. You're talking about big things that will come to fruition one day. We want you to fix the things that can be fixed today.
Thank you. Thanks for all here, they've heard that as well. The council has been helping with the strategy for the city going, no, that's fine. But certainly some of those major projects and things have been many years in the making. They've been delivered in the last probably 12 months and so they're very topical at the moment. There's certainly going to be new projects that are planned for the future, but I understand where you're coming from. Short-term priorities and simple things are something folks that are aware of.
This next question does actually, he might have something else to say. Just a point on your rates. State government, please, get passed on to us quite significantly as well. And we have to absorb those and having any rate rise, these where we sit, we have to be comfortable in that as well, but I understand what you're saying.
Can I just mention?
Yep.
Sorry, my daughter's home in Perth is worth a million dollars more than mine and her rate's a $700 cheaper a year. We pay some of the highest rates in the world.
I'd like to confirm a little bit more on that because it's very hard to rate area versus area and rate versus rate, but we can take that offline and have a look at that and analyse it a little bit later on. Ron.
Thank you, guys. And this is a question for you, Luke. Ron, Chris, obviously you know me from Balla City Soccer Club. And Usher Park is where we train. And we've had a couple of poles fall over. One's been down for about two years. And in regards to lighting across the whole of town, it's pretty dark in some places. Every time you talk about small ball sports, like the T-ball and that kind of stuff, the lighting. I've actually seen kids standing next to a ball that's flying past and I haven't even seen it. It's the lights are that poor. And getting back to looking after people who have families in town, one of the attractions for me was sport in this town. And obviously when you have a family and children, children start playing sport as well. So it's kind of pretty hard to see those four little kids playing in dafters in small ball sports. I'm just trying to hand you, how you're travelling with all the lighting stuff, mate.
Thanks, Ron. So the city's just completed the lighting order of all our facilities. Paved that up. Currently, we've got our first grant application in with the Department, Department of Local Government Sport and Culture Industries for Usher Park. Our next priority post that is Oasis Plainfield. And our next priority post to that, Zolderover and Stritchmore over. And after that, basically, we work our way through. $7.2 million is the investment in lighting. Anticipated, remembering things depending on budget and money. Anticipated over the next three years, but the intent would be Usher Park and Oasis in the next 12 months.
Thanks, Luke. We've got questions in just to see one, two, and then three, and then get through to that.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I've got my hands covered.
There you go, folks. I was just wondering that explosive, that part we talked about, or the guy we talked about, why don't they just move it? I mean, they've moved the airport from one side to the right to the other. And that would cost a lot more money. We've got plenty of time on our side. Just move it, it's going to break the whole underground and problem solved. We've got to solve some problems, not create more and do nothing about it. The other thing is with the rates, I mean, I don't know, I've never owned a rental property before in my life, no problem that will. But the question I want to know is that they go, so you guys say to us that our rates are based on the rental values of the property. So whoever does it uses the thing. But the thing is, the difference between rent and the owner, rental's got tax benefits, we haven't. So there should be a margin of a discount, you know, there should be something there to drop the value of our rates. There should be something in place because you, you know, if I owned a $500,000 rental, I'd get some tax benefits. But if I own a $500,000 house and I'm living in it and supporting the community very right, I don't think, there's something needs to be looked at. You know, the thing is, a lot of mistakes been made. And with the other one, there was another one too. But anyhow, that's a good start. I'll find a thing of them on, we'll get back.
I think it is.
Relocating the explosive reserve is something that the city certainly would be supportive of. It has been investigated multiple times. I think the mayor definitely had a tour out there earlier this year. Have a look at that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there's some internal friction between two different state government departments regarding that. One of them is demers who don't want to move the explosive reserve and the rest of the state government that wants to. So that issue is a state government issue that it'd probably best take up with a membership a little bit. I've got a couple more here at the back just to see. We'll try and work through them because we're close to 5 o'clock, Craig.
Hey, I'm having a look around here, I'm not seeing the retailers, brother. The retailers in this town are hurt. You've got safety open gap. Over Christmas time, especially, it got shut down because of what was happening in town. And it's still happening. Behind cars, we put those toilets, right? I don't see any, all I see there are people with toilet doors open, doing their business, kids walking past. So you've done nothing for safety in town? That's wrong. Walk up here at this part of Oldie, you see the same thing. But what are you going to do for the retailers? And I've been crying to you guys. I've come here looking for help and no one's got back for it. And they're hard at this town. I understand that Simone Debe and the Kalgoorlie Chamber of Commerce are doing a great job. When will you guys jump on board with her team and help doing stuff?
Craig, we actually are. We're committing $40,000 at the moment to spend with the KB Active. And it was actually myself and Simone who initiated that KB Active along the supplement for Kalgoorlie. So there is lots happening. We're not taking the credit for it. Simone's running that through, obviously through the Kalgoorlie Boulder Chamber of Commerce and Industry. The city, through our particular space with development and growth, are heavily committed to support that. You're going to see all of those pieces be upgraded as well. I'm myself and the Director of Development and Growth have visited businesses on the street. We went to your wife's shop. We're continuing to have those discussions. We know that it's an issue, but we're being proactive in this space and it's something that the city hasn't done. And you're reflective in your comments tonight. But we're very passionate about making sure that our retailers are also supported. Hence why we're putting ourselves into that space at the moment as well and heavily investing into that. Not just the council, but also for Boulder as well. Yep, thank you. Sorry, I've got some other questions.
Back to that, if a politician or anybody in this area walked down near the group tree and supported the business, we can say that to nine. And I'd hardly give a second politician this way.
Except for who, sorry? I was in your shop just a couple of months ago, sorry, just a couple of weeks ago with Simone Debe, actually. I've got one more question over here, we've got one here, Mr. Sir.
Hello, I just got a query about the rates you read through earlier on about the proportion of which industry, which residential, et cetera, et cetera, takes proportion to the total income for the city. Regarding rates themselves, the mayor said the 11% published in the paper is also correct. We're under a lot of pressure as a country, Australia, to reduce inflation. The Treasury's having problems keeping that down below 4%. And we're all having to suffer high interest rates at the moment to try to control spending. So can you give us how much our rates are going to be increased for each category, please? And I hope that's going to be less than 4%, which the national government's aiming for.
Thank you. In relation to the rates, now happening in the figure of COVID. The rates have been advertised at the moment, they've been out there for a little while now. We've been seeking public submissions on it. Council hasn't formally adopted the budget yet, so we haven't finalised what the rates are going to be. The 11% that was published in the paper is the overall rate income increase. So that's split across all the different categories. So it's not 11% on everyone's rates. Some will be more, some will be less than that, obviously. We're trying to shift the burden across towards industry because that's where the community's been telling us up until now. The individual rates we can't give you at the moment, but it's, the figure's probably going to be probably around 7% or I think was the average.
Well, that being the case, why isn't it below 4% or the country's aiming for? Maybe everyone, the government's trying to get us to pull our haws and not spend so much money. And you're saying, oh, well, it doesn't matter. So you're just contributing to the rate inflation in the country.
So if something goes up, and the mayor touched on it earlier, since the state government charge goes up, power for example, that gets passed straight back through everyone else. Street lighting, lighting in parks, lighting in facilities, everything else, that's an increased cost that gets put back to council. Council hasn't passed that on, we've got no choice in that. So it is a challenge, but we are continuing to work through that and we are encouraging submissions in relation to the rates. Where is the mayor?
All right. I've just been, my name is Bill Reid on the Chair of the First Nations Council in Kalgoorlie. If you don't know, we've been up in London for three years. We've worked with the council. But all I'm saying is, we, I can, I can, I can, I know what we did now with the antisocial stuff. But we've got some ideas. So, you know, Almoh, you go up in Kimberley, they've worked with local governments. And we've got their patrols there. I used to work, run a patrol in Lenoir. And that patrol worked really well. We used to go with businesses and all that, talking the issue, what the issue is. But all I think, I've seen the guidance and work with this. I think we better, we better move it forward. We have to get Almoh working on that street and working together with our First Nations. And if we can all put our heads together, we'll have people, a mix of us. And we can, we should, for our First Nations council, we can push, push for that and have a few people who can identify those people and go to those areas. Because as you know and I know, Almoh will interact more better with their own people if they're on the ground. So just me and the thought, I know that's an issue, but we're willing to work with people. And I know it's hard when you've got people in your businesses and your face. But we must address the problem instead of trying to look at all the negative, look at the positive and moving forward.
Certainly there's valid point raising there. So as the director touched on, we've got the Director's Civil Action Plan. Council's also been very proactive in working, particularly out with the staff, looking at the people who are coming in for lands and things like that, how we're going to work better together, how we can help facilitate it and make it safe for them, make it safe for everyone else. So we are going down that path. Part of the lobbying work we're doing in Canberra next week is about looking for additional funding from the federal government to help implement additional services. And part of that is about return to country, the other part of it is about facilitating people when they're in town. So we are working through that and we're trying to get other levels of government to help fund that rather than putting it all back on to the community. So that's part of what we're doing in the background for now. It's never going to be an easy process, we know that. But certainly we are focused very heavily on that space.
Just a quick question, two questions. Pigeons, what are you doing with the pigeons and the souvenir? And also, whose responsibility is it? I'm talking about tourists as well. I live on Bird Street and there's a lot of businesses that's got smashed windows boarded up. Some of them we know don't live here, they live in esterets, they've sleep, it is a place we can shop in. And you go down Bird Street and it's just terrible. Whose responsibility and can you push them to clean up their business? And current businesses that still have smashed windows as well, they need to fix them. So who's responsible and can you push them out?
Thank you. I'll pass that one across to the director.
Thank you. So most of the pigeons, they're quite difficult. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of pest control operators who were prepared to pigeon control, capture and baiting leave town. We do run a controlled program and we do try and encourage shop owners to put up, I guess, nesting prevention measures. And we are currently running, and it's always open program, a shop finding prevent program, if people are applying, if you're a business owner, to get up to two thirds funding to a maximum of $2,000 to support both the refreshment of your shop front but also initiatives that could, so for example, prevent the harbinger of pigeons. So it has been identified as a bit of a priority, so we'll be running a bigger program this year. And this will be part of the windows on Bird Street.
So what about, sorry, what about the people that actually don't live here and the place is boarded up? Like even on Bird Street, there's a building that had wider ads, it's boarded up. There's nothing that can be done about it, the pub on the corner. And yeah, a lot of the places are just, people aren't even here and they're just boarding them up. The house, the house, the shop next to me's got smashed windows, there's nobody in it, they live in esterets, so.
We can't necessarily as a city stop people from boarding up or securing a property. But if it's not secure or it's neglected or abandoned, we do have powers to be able to serve notices and require people to do things. So maybe we'll try and catch you afterwards and just get a general understanding where the issues are and we'll do a walk down and have a look.
We've got one more, Mr. Sir. Yep.
This is just a continuation on from that question to Alex. So what can be done to make the commercial business owners actually keep maintenance of their properties, particularly in Cannon Street, and not let them fall into disrepair? Because sometimes you can go for a walk along there, there's dust all over the windows. You know, bits of the veranda are falling down. It's obvious that those people don't care much about their property, which makes it look like the town and the community overall don't care much about the town and community.
Thank you. Look, it is really challenging. Our preferred method is to try and work collaboratively with both tenants and property owners. And so in that vein, we've been running small businesses like the Coffee Workshop to be walking the streets and talking directly to tenants and reaching out to real estate agents around properties, trying to kind of make it easy to apply to that shop finding program, which is just a one-page form and pretty easy to access. But we've also got Heritage and Access Inclusion Grants available as well. So if you've got a heritage building, you can apply and get a lot more funding to assist with things. So that's our, I guess, our preferred approach. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of levers available to, like, about to force people to do things that have effective timeframes in that space. So I think it's something that, look, it is, they identify both in Cannon Street and Bird Street as a bit of priority in terms of how shop fronts are looking and the condition of them. And so, look, I'd be really open to talking to any of your ideas you might have and seeing what we can do together and continue to try and get those property owners together as well.
My name's Bill Burris, I'm a geologist. I've been here 40 odd years. Married here, kids here, et cetera, et cetera. I'm here because the rocks are here. This interest is about the old Boulder Golf Club area. It's the subject of a government lease. City of Kalgoorlie Boulder are currently looking at it for a solar farm. Originally, it was looked at for a transport hub or a solar farm. This is a terrible diagram, but it's good enough. This is Panzack Drive. Here's the airport. There are two tenements. I represent the tenement holder here, Casey Jep is the other half. Premier Basalt, one of two most important ones in Kalgoorlie. 75% of gold has come out of the Golden Mile, 25% out of Premier Basalt. The idea is to build a solar farm here. There's stuff not known here since the first map in 1902. It's quite extraordinary, all the work that's been done, companies, government, et cetera. So that's part of it. But the incredible thing, I think, it's really quite ludicrous to want to put a solar farm on the end of a runway. 2013 to 23 is the treaty review in Ronald Mirovich's time. The idea was to extend the runway. That's really obvious and logical because there's no reason to put it the other direction. If something was found here that was economic, and I'm not saying there is or isn't, it would be below 13 metres, so they'd have to be underground. So you can do what you like there. But this is really just, you know, crazy, I think ridiculous to go ahead with that. So I've chopped down 10 minutes into a couple of minutes, just to fit the timing. But this needs substantial looking at. Where else would you put a solar farm? Kruksankov. On the south end of Kruksankov is the old state government battery, which is now all rehabbed. But that's an extensive area there. That could power the whole of Kalgoorlie, probably part of the super pit as well. All the other stupid things with the, say, called gas turbines, which I suppose it actually do's all. You know, it could be done once and once properly. And you could even put some turbines up on top of the super pit, most of them. And add to the solar farm. But I think, I'm just trying to bring that to your attention. It's a mining town and you just cannot sterilise areas. Geological survey themselves through their own mapping state that anything or any place where a geological, built on a dollar or a Premier Basalt is highly prospective. And these areas, this area in particular, has never, ever been followed up. There are three areas, Mangoy, Ruis, St. There are three areas, ongoing real estate industrial state, the north-west sector, as it was called by the geological survey of the main core, and the Anfak Drive areas, all of those were sterilised by drilling. In other words, nothing was found, do what you like there forever. Once you cover those areas, you're stripped completely. So until these areas are, you know, on this area, there's a water war and one drill. The super pit's just here. It's extraordinary.
Right, we, we're just, I'm saying the next lot's starting to line up outside, Mr Mayor. So we will have to put a couple of short questions. Look, I want to do all the members other. You know, this is, this is the first opportunity we've had to come out of a town hall meeting as such. Council does meet every year or the third or fourth Mondays. Opportunity for public question time on the council meeting night. So people do have the opportunity to come in and ask questions to council whenever they do want to. We're always able to receive feedback, the mechanisms we talked about earlier today. But certainly on behalf of the executive myself, we're always happy to try and answer questions where we can and as our council. So very old question.
Thank you, Mr Seer. Pretty much want to reiterate that. Obviously, we do have a citizenship ceremony commencing at 6pm. So we've got a few of the two up to the inquiry ready to come in and start their warm-ups. But again, I want to thank our councillors for the commitment that they hold for this city. Many people probably don't realise it and don't appreciate what commitment they do have. The Deputy Mayor, who's a very wonderful assistant to myself. Councillor Bodica has been on council for nearly 30 years. Councillor Winner, who's the Chair of the GDC Board. Councillor O'Donnell, a former member for Kalgoorlie, but also is a Collingwood supporter. We don't have that against him too much. And, thank you, I knew there'd be one to support for it. And also councillor Turner, who's back again on council and is very across the issues within the city. We are as well, but these forums, they provide you the passion and the emotion that we can hear in your voice rather than read it on a screen. So thank you very much for taking the time. We'll take some questions forward if you still have some later on. Send them through to our emails at the city. We're only too happy to answer it and go into the CEO. His executive leadership team who have been able to answer questions tonight. I'd like to thank the staff that put everything together tonight. And without us council, our staff, we wouldn't be anything without our staff. So just like a round of applause for our staff who managed to do it tonight. We know we don't get right all the time. There was a chance of some laughter. But we do appreciate your thoughts because it does go a long way to have robust conversations. But also, there's nothing undeniable about the passion that our council has for the city of Kalgoorlie Boulder and moving forward. It's about understanding that as a community. Thank you very much.